He was.
We don't, uh, probably this one.
Sixty-seven.
I'll let her in and read them all.
Yeah.
There we go.
I hereby call to order the June 2nd, 2025 City of Sedalia Council Meeting. First, I would like to have Legislative Mayor and President of the Districts.
Do stand as able, join in our invocation this evening. Dear Lord, Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the City Council of Sedalia, Mayor, Port members, staff, administrators, meet to hear about, question, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication to this city. We ask your protection for all of our first responders who work 24/7 to protect us, often at their own peril, and of which we speak tonight Chief of Police Woolery now, celebrating 30 years of service to this city, for which we are most grateful. We are also grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic. So many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve it for these 250 years. Please bless and protect all of our miller, tarry, and civilians serving this great country today, here, and throughout the world, and bring them home safely to their loved ones. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is Service Awards, and I would please like to call interim City Administrator Matthew Work.
Uh, Chief Woolery, come up forward this morning or this evening? I, uh, I was just thinking this morning that I would, uh, bring along a little something for you.
Look at those children.
Yeah, yeah. Just to remind everybody, we had hair and we were skinny once. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We gather to honor a truly exceptional leader and public servant and friend of this community. It is my great privilege to recognize Chief David Woolery for an incredible 30 years of dedicated service to the Sedalia Police Department and the citizens of Sedalia. Now, for those of us who worked with Chief Woolery since the 1990s, we've seen a few things. We've seen technology change. We've seen hairstyles evolve, sometimes for the better. Think I have a mustache. And we survived the fashion choices of that decade. I think a few of us even had matching glasses. I think yours were rose-colored, mine were transition lenses.
Cheer up.
Yeah. Somehow, they made us look both serious and probably slightly confused. And through it all, though, one thing never changed, is your steady leadership and unshakable character. Over the past three decades, Chief Woolery has exemplified what it means to serve with integrity, compassion, and unwavering commitment. From his early days as a young officer to his respected role as Chief of Police, he has led by example with calm resolve, strong values, and deep for love of this community. Tonight, we pause to say thank you. Thank you for your service, your leadership, and thank you for 30 remarkable years to the city of Sedalia. Please join me in congratulating Chief David Woolery.
I think it's safe to say that whoever had a part in creating that spends most of their time with me, making fun of me, but that was, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, um, just to make Chief Irwin's eyes roll, that he knows, knows I won't miss this opportunity to say something. After 30 years, I can with certainty say that it has been, it's always been my passion to be a law enforcement officer, and I picked the right place to do it. I have got to work with and for some of the most incredible people that I've ever known. So thank you for that opportunity, and it is with sincere honor that I've got to serve this community, because it's a fabulous place. Thank you.
So next, I would entertain a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from May 19th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Now, I would entertain a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes from May 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to Public Works. Chairwoman Michelle Franklin.
I have several items this evening. The first one is the Water Pollution Control Division has requested approval for the purchase of a new Volvo L70H2 wheel loader for the use of city compost site. The existing machine is nearing the end of its service life with over 17,000 hours, and this replacement was planned capital purchase in the fiscal '26 budget. The new loader includes an onboard material weighing capability, which will delay the need for a separate drive-on scale and improve efficiency. Through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract, the city received a 43.6% discount, bringing the price to $236,345, and the contract meets our purchasing policies. A trade-in credit of $32,000 for the outgoing loader reduces the final cost to $204,345, much lower than the budgeted amount. The purchase also includes a comprehensive five-year, 6,000-hour warranty. Staff recommend moving forward with this acquisition to maintain reliable service, reduce maintenance costs, and support future compost operation.
Okay. I would like to call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-95.
Bill Number 2025-95. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a wheel loader for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill Number 2025-95. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a wheel loader for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Foster, uh, Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Does it pass this?
Six yes.
The second item, the Water Pollution Control Division of the-
Six yes, one absent.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Jason.
The Water Pollution Control Division of the Utilities Department requests to purchase a CAT 926M wheel loader, which has been under lease for the past five years and remains in excellent condition. With the lease set to expire in August of '26, Caterpillar Financial has extended a purchase-lease-buyout offer to the city for $72,975. Comparable models are currently priced significantly higher on the market. Staff propose using funds already allocated for the ongoing lease payments, along with savings realized from recent purchase of the Volvo loader to fund the acquisition. This purchase is expected to save the city approximately $27,500 annually over the loader's remaining service life. Staff recommends moving forward with the purchase as a cost-effective, long-term effective equipment solution while still staying within budget.
I would please like to call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-96.
Bill Number 2025-96. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a wheel loader for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill Number 2025-96. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a wheel loader for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent.
Does the bill pass this?
The Water Pollution Control Division requests approval to purchase a 2025 Chevrolet 3500 four-by-four service truck to replace a 2004 Dodge Ram 2500 that has reached the end of its service life. The vehicle replacement was included in the fiscal '26 budget, and the department solicited bids for a one-ton service truck with utility bed. The lowest and best bid was submitted by WK Chevrolet of Sedalia in the amount of $67,521, which is below the amount budgeted for this purchase. Staff recommends approval for this bid to ensure continued reliability and functionality in daily field operation.
I would like to call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-97.
Bill Number 2025-97. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet 3500 four-by-four for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill Number 2025-97. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet 3500 four-by-four for water pollution control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
The Public Works Department requests approval of Change Order Number One for the 2024-009 Sedalia Small Sanitary Sewer Project A located between the Central Regional Lift Station and Wire Co. This change order reflects finalized unit quantities used during construction and includes a line item for the removal and replacement of unsuitable soils with two-inch base rock. The result is a net decrease of $103,795 to the original contract, reducing the total project cost from $411,664 to $307,869. Staff recommend approval of this change order with Do Right Construction and Excavating LLC.
Okay, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-98.
Bill Number 2025-98. An ordinance authorizing Change Order Number One for Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Bill Number 2025-98. An ordinance authorizing Change Order Number One for Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Scribner is absent. Six yes, one absent.
Bill passes.
And the final item this evening, the Public Work, Operation, and Utility Division jointly requests approval for the purchase of five vehicles essential to delivering core city services. The Operation Division seeks to acquire two single-axle plow trucks, $528,338.89 total, and two multifunction tandem trucks with hook lift systems, $607,220, and a combined total of $1,135,558.90. This reflects a deliberate reduction in the original number of requested units to help absorb the higher-than-budgeted cost of the macro favor approved earlier this year. Separately, the Utilities Division proposes purchasing a tandem axle dump truck, including chassis, $160,414, and bed, $53,725, for a total of $214,139. By aligning this purchase with the operation order, the city realized additional cost savings on the utility vehicle bundle procurement and shared vendor coordination. All five vehicles will be procured through the cooperative purchasing contracts from MoDOT and Missouri Buys, and all purchases remain within their respective fiscal '26 budget allocations. Staff recommend approval for these coordinated purchases from Premier Truck Group and Henderson Products Incorporated.
Call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-99, please.
Bill Number 2025-99. An ordinance authorizing sales agreements for the purchase of vehicles for the Street and Water Departments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Bill Number 2025-99. An ordinance authorizing sales agreements for the purchase of vehicles for the Street and Water Departments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent, and Bogus.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent.
Bill passes. Okay, now, let's move on to Community Development, please. Vice Chairman Bob Cross.
Yes, I have three items. Mr. Lucas Richardson will present the annual report for the Central Business and Culture District as required.
Yes, I'm Lucas Richardson, Vice Chair of Sedalia Main Streets, and here is our budget before you for this upcoming year. We've got our ground maintenance, $1,500. The facade program is new money and stuff left over from projects that didn't get all the way through in the last year. Our pavilion restrooms that we're hopefully going to be working on this year, 2016, or 2026. Signs and benches that have been going in the alley activations, murals. We've got a couple more in the works, and we've had some pretty good success with the ones that you've seen downtown. And our special events, the Thanksgiving fireworks, Scott Joplin, Criterion, First Thursdays, Quarterly Business Mixer, and other events. So our, oh, and other expenses, training, supplies, fees, things that we need to keep going. So our total expenditures are anticipated to be $158,102.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Richardson?
I think I have one more slide.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So, yes, for the, our tax revenue for 2025 was $42,170. Anticipated tax, uh, is $42,049 for 2026. Other revenue that we've, are anticipating is grant fees and interest. So total expenditures, $158,102. Our current balance is $195,903, plus this next year's current revenue and expenditures add $106,610. So we would, if you could, well, yes, continue, and we can keep making downtown pretty and active.
Okay, now, does council have any questions for Mr. Richardson? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucas. The second item we have is the City of Sedalia, in partnership with Sedalia Main Streets, seeks to renew its annual agreement with Missouri Main Street Connection and Corporation for 2025. This agreement allows Sedalia to continue leveraging the national reorganized Main Street approach, a proven strategy for downtown revitalization, and economic development, design improvements, promotion, and organizational support. Continued participation provides access to expert guidance, training, networking opportunities, and statewide resources that help strengthen local businesses, attract new investment, and preserve the historic character of the downtown Sedalia. Approving this agreement reinforces the Sedalia's commitment to a vibrant, thriving downtown and allowed with ongoing efforts to promote economic growth and promote community pride. Staff recommends approval. Would you have anything else to add to this, Mayor?
I think you got it. I would please like to have Bill Number 2025-100 read.
Bill Number 2025-100. An ordinance authorizing the 2025 Annual Main Street Program Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill Number 2025-100. An ordinance authorizing the 2025 Annual Main Street Program Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent.
Bill passes.
At the request of City Council staff as prepared in Amendment Chapter 12-610 of the Sedalia City Code to extend operating hours for licensed marijuana dispensaries. The proposed change allows dispensaries to remain open until 10:00, rather than the previous closing time of 8:00 p.m. This adjustment is intended to support legitimate business operations, reflect consumer demand, and align Sedalia's regulations with caperole across Missouri.
Could I call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-101?
Bill Number 2025-101. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding operating hours for marijuana dispensaries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Bill Number 2025-101. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding operating hours for marijuana dispensaries.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
I want to abstain.
Cross.
Yes.
You have five yes, one absent, one abstain.
So the bill fails because we don't have six.
I'm sorry.
The bill fails. We need six.
Oh.
Bill fails.
Okay. So, let's see, we move on to liquor licenses, please.
We have one new license and one renewal tonight. A new license for Lipping Chin doing business as Joy Hibachi Inc., 1975, West Broadway for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales, and a renewal license for Jenna Guyer doing business at State Fair Eagle Stop at 1515 Thompson Boulevard for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I made a mistake. Five will do it. That bill passes.
The bill passes, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so, we're going to back it up. Bill Number 2025-101 passes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay. So now, I would like to move to miscellaneous items from the City Council and City Administrator.
I have one item for tonight. It's a thank you, and I would like to thank the residents in the North Side community for their tireless work in making sure that the sidewalk grant for the North Side received all of the signatures and the historic information that was required by obtaining this grant. As those who have grown up in Sedalia and know the history of this area, we know that sidewalks was not an accommodation for those living in that area. Our sidewalks were the streets. I'm excited to see this improvement in our area, and there will be a groundbreaking ceremony on June 14th in coordination with the Juneteenth celebration at Hubbard Park on June 14th, starting at 12:00 noon.
Is that it, my dear?
That's it.
All right. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about? No? Okay. So, we will move on to Good and Welfare. Next on our agenda is the Good and Welfare portion of the meeting. This is the time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address the City Council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number, and the agenda item you wish to address. Comments must relate to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chamber is a limited public forum, and all remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint, you may do so in writing through the city clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the view of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum and for your continued participation in the civic life of our city. At this time, we'll begin by calling forward those who've signed up to speak. Let's see, first, I would please like to call up Jason Unwin.
How you doing? Well, I guess you already settled the question on the marijuana dispensary, but, uh-
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah, my name's Jason Unwin, U-N-W-I-N. I live in, admittedly, Cold Camp, Missouri, 607 West Main Street. And the reason I was talking was about this marijuana distributor. I used to live in Colorado, and they've legalized marijuana in Colorado, and even the former governor of Colorado thinks that they shouldn't have done it. And, but then again, he promoted himself up to senator now from Colorado, so he's not complaining too badly. But, the reason I bring this up is that, admittedly, yes, I don't live here in Sedalia, but I have a lot of commitments with a youth organization here in Sedalia. And when you look at news reports, you see a lot of drug-involved incidents, driving while intoxicated, driving while drugged, arrests while there's drugs in the car or the vehicle. One of our members are a Civil Air Patrol unit. He's a Pettis County Sheriff, and he was running the drone operation here a few weeks ago when a couple deputies were shot during a engagement with a drug dealer here in this county. And he, he and I were talking, we're both, he's current law enforcement, now former law enforcement, and we were just talking about that, on how, how much drugs is a part of our, of our society. And so anyway, what I'd like to say is, let's try to limit how much drugs we're getting into the society, legal and illegal. Just because it's legal doesn't make it right. There's a lot of legal things that are right things. And I suggest that you talk to the Pettis County Sheriff, Pettis County, the, the police chief, and just see how many crimes are related to drugs, legal and illegal, like getting your free legal cannabis, munching it down, so to speak, and then driving. How, how many times does that happen? And so I really think we need to look at the big picture, the big societal picture, of the impact that it's having on our community. And so I would think that in the future, please consider trying to limit the amount of drugs getting into our community. It's, it's not good, and you, there's also, like Colorado, again, my home state, we now got homeless shelters, homeless hanging around State Capitol. There's tons of them around my old hometown, Pueblo, Colorado, and Colorado Springs. Police have to get in there and get a bulldozer and scrape them out. Now, admittedly, we're not to that point, but the point is, is that at some time in the future, you may be at that point. And so ideally, is, is to head- And so ideally, is, is to head it off before it happens. And so in my opinion, you really ought to consider possibly limiting how much free, correction, legal marijuana you get into, into the community, considering all the other illegal drugs that are in the community as it is now. And so anyway, I'll conclude, and just please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, but next I would please like to call up Debbie Covington.
Debbie Covington, 2601 East 12th. I just have a question. As I'm going over the agenda in preparation for tonight, under Public Works, there was a purchase of $72,975, another purchase of $67,521, and then a purchase of $1,349,697.90. And then also, when you move down to Community Development, there's different bills that were, well, not even talked about tonight, but pushed through on the Main Street program. And I'm just curious, you know, according to the clerk's office today, you all haven't had a Community Development Council meeting since October 21st of 2024, and the same with Public Works Council Committee, there hasn't been a meeting since December 12, 2024. So to make these purchases that are on the agenda tonight, and with no dialogue here at the council between each other, or when are you all meeting to discuss this, and is all the council people here, present for these bills that you all are pushing through to discuss it? And why is the public, I've asked this before, but why is the public not a part of this? Why are we not invited? Why isn't it livestreamed? Is this coming straight from the, the budget sessions? Are you, are you all meeting for these council committee meetings? If not, what's the point of the council committee? And if you are, why aren't we able to see how you all come to the decisions to pass these bills so easily during the council meetings? So I just wanted it on record that, according to the clerk's office, you all, it's the same with Finance and Admin, with the anti-first amendment ordinance you all passed, you all had, Finance and Admin hadn't met since last year either, so when are you all meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a non-agenda item, I would please like to call Renee Vance up.
Renee Vance, 19813 Tangle Nook. I am here to address the council because this is June, and as Juneteenth is approaching, we're excited about that, but I'm also here for the senior center. We have our 50th gala, our third gala, which will be held on the 26th. I have tickets available, they are sold at $50 or 800, or 400 for table of eight, excuse me. It is on the 22nd, or 25th. We have got dueling pianos, and it's going to be a sock hop, 50s attire, if you're ready to break out the pompadour and the poodle skirts, but we're going to have a really good time honoring three living and one past senior for this year. We also have got a green egg drawing. It will be done on July 3rd. It's one of those ceramic expensive cookers, comes complete, it's got a thousand dollar value, I've got tickets for those, they're $10. We have all of 300, so that's a really good deal, and all proceeds are going to be benefiting the senior center. So your support is always encouraged. We are looking for some volunteer drivers, we're getting short on our home delivery. We need two volunteer drivers, Wednesday and Friday. If you could spare an hour and a half, we'd love to have you. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I would entertain a motion to move to closed-door meeting.
Do we need a lawyer?
I need you to read all the, please, the motion for legal advice, real estate, all the, the list, please. Okay. So, okay, the motion to move to closed-door meeting for one, legal advice, two, real estate, twelve negotiated contracts of section 610.021, RISMO. And I need a second on that, please.
Second.
Okay, do I need roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scribner is absent, Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Thank you.
So move.
You gotta open it.
You gotta reopen it and adjourn.
Okay, so motion to open.
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
Okay, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call? No.
No.
All right. On favor?
Again?
Aye.
Bye, guys, thank you.
I love it. I love it. I love it.